Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance, please. Steve Rosendich, would you lead us?
The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Everybody, please take a look at the minutes of February 6, 2018, please. There are no questions, comments, omissions, motion, please.
Gail, move to approve minutes of February 6, 2018.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item four starts with a council proclamation, and it's actually congratulations to us, the City of Oak Creek, as we were named the South Suburban Chamber 2017 Business of the Year, as evidenced by the big trophy sitting on the front here. So, we couldn't be prouder, we'd like to thank the Chamber for that, but we do have proclamation. And Catherine, when you're ready, you can read that.
Certainly. Council proclamation 18-01, congratulations to the City of Oak Creek, South Suburban Chamber of Commerce, 2017 Business of the Year Award winner. Whereas, the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce conducts an annual search for the business most deserving of recognition because of their contributions to the South Suburban communities, their organizations, and its youth. Whereas, the Chamber will be hosting a banquet on Thursday, February 15, 2018, to honor the 2017 Business of the Year Award winner, and whereas, the City of Oak Creek has been chosen by the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce to receive the 2017 Business of the Year Award, and whereas, the City of Oak Creek has been and continues to be one of the fastest-growing cities in Milwaukee County, and whereas, to serve that growing population, the City of Oak Creek has been operating as a well-run business in all aspects, from human resources, safety and security, public health, permits, and revenue collections, and whereas, what has been most dramatic and evident in the city is the support that is given to businesses that have moved to the city or have expanded their operations. From the much anticipated IKEA opening in the spring of 2018, to the many restaurants and stores in the Drexel Town Square, to the many businesses throughout the city, it is evident that Oak Creek has experienced significant growth in the development of retail, housing, restaurant, and hotels, and whereas, the city is committed to aggressive support for business and for the recreational needs of its residents, and whereas, the City of Oak Creek is being recognized for its success as a well-run business and for its support and development of business in the city. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel Bukiewicz, Mayor, on behalf of the citizens of the City of Oak Creek, hereby graciously accept the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce 2017 Business of the Year Award. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to the City of Oak Creek.
Thank you, Catherine, and just before the roll, I would like to congratulate all the employees of Oak Creek who really earned this award for us. It's their hard work, dedication that keeps the city doing what it does, puts us in a position to do the things we do, so I'd like to congratulate them because they very much earned it. If anybody would like to say anything for the roll? Steve?
I'd like the Stanley Cup, we each get to take it home for a week or so.
You know what, it's been sitting up here, I guess we could kind of do something like that. District to district, it can go on a tour. Ken?
Yeah, thanks Mayor. Yeah, I think it really is, I think thankfully, a testament to all the past staff, past mayors, past leadership here, current leadership, really testament to the fact that the business community out there saw fit to recognize the staff in the building, our safety services, police fire, planning, our legal side, finance, human resources, library, utilities, I think in general, just a really testament to the effort on behalf of staff under Andrew's leadership currently, and it's great to see that the community out there as a whole has seen fit to recognize that.
Thank you. Else? Seeing none, roll call. Or motion, sorry, we need the motion.
Gail, move to approve council proclamation 18-01, congratulations to the City of Oak Creek, South Suburban Chamber of Commerce, 2017 Business of the Year Award winner.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And item five is also a proclamation for the Pride and Premise Award winners, Polish Heritage Alliance in Franklin. It was awarded at the South Suburban Chamber Dinner in 2017. Catherine, if you'd please read that.
Council proclamation 18-02, congratulations to the Polish Heritage Alliance, South Suburban Chamber of Commerce, 2017 Pride and Premises Award winner. Whereas, the Pride and Premises Award is given annually by the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce to the Chamber member who exemplifies pride in their community through the design, construction, and maintenance of their facilities and landscaping, and whereas, the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a banquet on Thursday, February 15, 2018, to honor the Pride and Premises Award winner, and whereas, the Polish Heritage Alliance has been chosen by the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce to receive the Pride and Premises Award, and whereas, the Polish Heritage Alliance, Inc., promotes understanding and appreciation of Polish heritage and culture is embodied in traditions, history, language, current affairs, and the arts, and whereas, the Polish Center of Wisconsin is located in a picturesque, park-like setting that is cared for by the many volunteers who donate countless hours to maintain the beauty of the Polish Center surroundings, and where the facility itself is a Polish cultural treasure where people can come to share in tradition, culture, food, and fun. The ornate and picturesque landscape provides a natural breathtaking and perfect environment and background for weddings, showers, banquets, and meetings, and whereas, the Polish Center was designed in the style of a Polish manor house, a fitting symbol of Poland's national heritage and tradition of gracious hospitality. The facility is unique in that every banquet room has a scenic view of the lake or the patio, and its many colorful plantings and flowers. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel Bukiewicz, Mayor of the City of Oak Creek, hereby congratulate the Polish Heritage Alliance for being selected the winner of the 2017 Pride and Premises Award. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to the Polish Heritage Alliance.
Thank you, Catherine, and once again, congratulations to the Polish Heritage Alliance, very well deserved. If you've never been out there up in Franklin, it's a beautiful facility, take some time and visit it. With that, motion.
Dukenyak, move for approval of council proclamation number 18-02, congratulations to the Polish Heritage Alliance, South Suburban Chamber of Commerce, 2017 Pride and Premise Award winner.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item number six starts our public hearings, it is consideration of a rezone by I-Drexel LLC, I-CAP Development. Rezone the properties at 410-500 West Drexel Avenue from M1 Manufacturing, B4 Highway Business. There will be no change to the C1 Shoreland Wetland Conservancy District, or the Flood Fringe District, or the Floodway District. With that, who do we have with us tonight? Catherine?
Public hearing number one is to consider a request by I-Drexel LLC, I-CAP Development LLC, to rezone the properties at 410 and 500 West Drexel Avenue, from M1 Manufacturing to B4 Highway Business, no change to the C1 Shoreland Wetland Conservancy District, FF Flood Fringe District, or FW Floodway District. Applicant is I-Drexel LLC, I-CAP Development LLC, property owner, Drexel Self-Storage, Inc., and Paluzinski Family Trust, UID 102992, DBA Metal Spun Products. Legal description there follows, date of notice is January 17, 2018.
Great, thank you. Carrie, you gonna recap for us?
Sure. This item was held at the December 5 Common Council Meeting in order to allow for a Comprehensive Plan Amendment hearing, which did occur. The Plan Commission then reviewed the change at the January 9 meeting, and adopted a resolution in favor of the proposed rezone, or I'm sorry, in favor of the change to the Comprehensive Plan, to allow for plan mixed use, and then, the Common Council actually approved that amendment on January 16. So, this is actually the second step in the redevelopment of these properties, and this is a request to rezone the two properties to B4 Highway Business, as was stated, and the existing buildings on the property would be removed in favor of a redevelopment that currently would, we are going to have plans at the next Plan Commission meeting to review for a proposed grocery store and future commercial. Existing parcels in the area would support the proposed rezone, there are mixed uses in DTS, which is to the south, there's commercial to the west in the form of Starbucks and ATI Fiscal Therapy, there's manufacturing to the north above the drainage, and then there are businesses that go east toward Howell Avenue. Staff has reviewed this and is in favor of it based on the review of the intent of the B4 Highway Business District, and if council agrees, there is a motion and a recommendation for approval.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. As this is a public hearing, we'll make three calls. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach your podium. Name and address is required. This is the first call. Second call. Third and final call. Okay, we will now close the public hearing on item six, and there's the resolution. Oh, thank you. We'll move on to item seven, which is approval of the ordinance. Questions, comments from the commission? Nothing? Okay, motion.
Kowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2891 to rezone the properties at 410 and 500 West Drexel Avenue, from M1 Manufacturing to B4 Highway Business, no change to the C1 Shoreland Wetland Conservancy District, FF Flood Fringe District, or FW Floodway District in the first district. Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
No.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item eight, consideration of resolution number 11904011618, approving a certified survey map for Brian and Jenny Stromowski for the properties at 1825 East Drexel Avenue. Carrie? Got it.
As the council is aware, this item was actually held in January to allow staff to research a couple of items, one being the future right-of-way that's shown along Drexel Avenue, and also the existing shed that's on the rear of the property that crosses or at least touches the property boundary. Staff conferred with the city attorney and found that there are options available to council with regard to the future right-of-way along Drexel Avenue. It does appear that there is a section of code that would allow the council to make the decision to either require or not require that future right-of-way dedication. As far as the shed is concerned, there is also the allowance for the council to allow that shed to remain, as the CSM proposed does not actually affect the existing non-conforming status of the shed. There is still a concern with staff with regard to the right-of-way dedication, that this would set a precedent, making it challenging for staff to uniformly enforce the municipal code obligations to plan for and maintain local roadways in the community as stated in the report. However, with regard to the shed, staff has no concerns with the existing non-conforming use, as long as council approves it.
Thank you, Carrie. At this time, I'll open it up to the council for questions, comments?
Question, is this something that has to be considered in two parts? Approval first of the recommendation on the shed, and then approval or disapprove the right-of-way? And can we give approval for the certified survey map if we do approve one and don't approve the other?
Go ahead, if you can make it clearer than I.
I will try, thank you. I will try to turn on my microphone first. So, I think the question is, how do we proceed, and what are our options? So, I would suggest that there be a motion, whatever that might be, on the floor, in terms of perhaps either adopting the ordinance as stated with the conditions that are outlined, which are enumerated, including the dedication of the right-of-way as indicated in the existing ordinance. The other condition would be the removal of the shed by the deadline stated. The third condition is that any technical corrections would be made, so that would be a motion to adopt the ordinance as stated, as indicated, as presented to the council. I would suggest that if there is some discussion, that perhaps I could help to frame any other motion, if it's going to be, as you asked Alderman Dukenyak, some modification to that ordinance where perhaps it weren't all three of those conditions, then it could be a motion to adopt the ordinance with the conditions including X, Y, and Z, whatever they might be. So, if those conditions are to include one and two, one and three, whatever it might be, we can lay that out.
Okay, let me, I guess, state what my line of thinking is on this. At the last meeting, we had discussions about the shed, and really found that not to be a very objectionable part of the certified survey map. Brian had gotten the okay from the MMSD. It's on a portion of his property that there will be no additional development, Brian, right? Because it's MMSD property, right? So, I think there was consensus among us that the thing's out there, it's in good shape, it can't be expanded, if it's ever torn down, it can't be rebuilt, but as it is right now, to ask for it to be taken down really serves no purpose. It's not hurting or harming anyone, other than technically not being in line with city ordinance. So, that would be number one. Number two, as far as the right-of-way is concerned, not being as experienced in those issues, if that does present a problem for the city as far as setting precedent, well then I think that, you know, we may have to consider, you know, demanding or requesting that the right-of-way be part of the certified survey map. So, you know, that's my line of thought, one, you know, give Brian a little bit of a break here on this, on the shed request for it to be taken down by the 18th, and certainly on the other point, and probably the bigger point of the two, is that right-of-way, then let's have a discussion about that. I'm certainly on board to, just common sense, to let the shed be up there. So, I don't know if we continue that conversation.
Other thoughts from the council? Steve?
I'm with Rich on the shed, and according to the map, you've got those proposed roads that are, you know, that come off of Drexel Avenue, is this certified, we didn't talk about it tonight, but does the certified survey map talk about the proposed roads that are depicted on the map? I know I made a comment at the last meeting that those were on a drawing board since, well, as Doug would say, almost forever, so they're kind of old, and they haven't been built, and nobody's talking about building them, so it's probably a two-part question, Carrie, is the roads on the map that are planned, is that part of the CSM tonight?
The future right-of-way dedication is part of the resolution condition that is recommended by staff, it is not currently shown on the CSM.
So, we're only talking about a right-of-way on Drexel Avenue, then?
Correct.
Nothing about those roads, okay?
Well, the future right-of-way is the road that we're talking about, I believe that we're talking about that same thing. The future road right-of-way is the map, the official map that's shown on our GIS system, and that future right-of-way is not reflected on the CSM, and that's one of the things that staff has recommended to include on the CSM as part of the resolution conditions.
Would be the road that comes off of Drexel Avenue that circles around back into the subdivision, and you got the one cul-de-sac, and then you got one, that's all part of the CSM tonight, we're talking about those?
The future road right-of-way would only be shown for the two parcels that are part of the CSM. Perhaps I'm not understanding your question?
Well, we're talking about right-of-way, and we're talking about Drexel Avenue, but are we also talking about the proposed roads that come off of Drexel Avenue and basically circle that piece of property? Is that part of our discussion tonight, or just Drexel Avenue?
Just Drexel Avenue, because those other future road right-of-ways do not actually affect the two parcels on the CSM.
Okay.
Hold on, Steve?
Well, I guess I still have the same position, is that the thought is there, you might need the property, and it's been there forever, and there's no indication that we're gonna need the property in the foreseeable future, so I just have a hard time with the right-of-way, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. Anyone else? Nothing?
Sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead, Karen.
I think the solution Doug and MMSD have found for the shed, I think speaks for itself, it's kind of a non-issue at this point. The dedication of the right-of-way obviously is a little more tricky situation, because I think Brian spoke his case here the last time he was in front of us. The overriding issue is the fact that, you know, Carrie spoke in the council amendment to the council reports, suggests the fact that, you know, in a planned community that has a zoning overlay and such like that, that we typically rely upon our comp plan and our planning efforts of the past to kind of lay out how the city will build out and how it will progress, you know, and those things were made in looking not, you know, a year or two down the road, they were made looking out planning the city for its foreseeable future, for our kids and generations to come, so that's why you include these kind of things in your planning overlays, so you can account for stuff that's gonna happen when some of us aren't even gonna be around anymore. So, in the future, if these roads build out of the city become imperative, that Drexel Avenue become a four-lane boulevard or something in the future, that you've accounted for that and planned for that, so that's why it may be important to memorialize, as Carrie suggested in the report, or the amendment to the report, that even though it may seem a bit short-sighted to have this, or a little premature to have this in here, that it's part of the overall continuum, and if you're doing business in the city and buying and selling properties, those are the kind of things you gotta deal with, so I'm inclined to kind of memorialize that and codify that and record it in the CSM upfront as we move forward. I think that kind of strikes very balance and does kind of set the tone that we took these efforts in the past, and we're gonna continue to take these efforts in the future to make sure we think about things for future generations and kind of take them into account in our decision-making.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me try and understand all that. So, you're saying, you're suggesting that we do insist upon the right-of-way?
I would add, kid, for...
That's pretty much it.
Okay.
Going forward with that, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Stromowski, you'd like to speak?
Hi, Brian Stromowski, 8634 South Shepherd Avenue, Oak Creek. Maybe, I guess what, in a way, I don't have a problem with putting the ROW on my CSM, but I guess the question is, what is the normal procedure later on when the road, when this does happen? Is the owner or owners gonna be compensated by the city for this land that I'm putting on ROW? Like, maybe I'm wrong.
It's my understanding, and Carrie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we went through this at planning, and I understood it better afterwards, actually. If it was an existing property the way it was, and we came in to expand that road, yes, we'd compensate you, but since you're developing, we do it upfront. Seems kind of a goofy rule, but that is the way we do it. It's consistent throughout the city, and I think we do need to stick to that consistency with our staff, because we get it done while it's being developed, and you're considered in development mode. But if you'd have left these properties, then no.
Well, then, you wouldn't even have done a new CSM, but again, so the normal procedure is that if you're subdividing, the owner automatically has to give the property away without at any time being compensated.
Correct.
That falls underneath eminent domain, I mean, that's illegal, basically, that's the Fifth Amendment. You can't do that, you just can't. I mean, that's what I, I don't have a problem putting on there right now, but there's gotta be some type of documentation that says that the city's gonna compensate myself or the next owner of that property. You just, that's taking property.
Again, that's...
Make this to the end.
Again, when I first heard it, and you were here a couple months back, I even said I, afterwards, I said I'll check into it. I was surprised to learn that myself. Again, I think, I don't think eminent domain's the way to do it, because it's a right-of-way, we're not, that land is still technically yours until we need it for that right-of-way for purposes of development. Which may or may never happen.
Right, and all I'm saying is, if it ever happens that somebody, myself, if I'm still there, or the new owner, or the other owner of them selling the property, is compensated for the land that's gonna be taken.
But it's a right-of-way, then.
Pardon?
But we consider it a right-of-way for development, so whether it's used or not, or is an eminent domain, once they take it, it's gone right away. And maybe my definitions are off, but again, it is our policy, and I do think we should remain consistent with what our staff recommends, and I know it stinks for you in this particular junction case, but again, if we did that all over, consider what happened here along Drexel Avenue. Whoever thought at the time what the right-of-ways were gonna be here along Drexel, and from here to 27th. So, I mean, it was pre-planning ahead of time as to what would happen. Now again, I think that end of Drexel's pretty well-built out, but as Alderman Gail said, if it goes to four lanes, something like that, they had a lane.
Yeah, I'm guessing it won't happen in the time that I'm around here, but...
Right. I guess they're just, they're trying to get out in front of the whole thing. Am I right with that, Mike?
Yeah, just if I can add a couple of things, but exactly, I mean, this is the process when properties are developed, and you take a, you know, several acre parcel previously farmed, roads get planted on it, the property gets developed, those entire road right-of-ways, those 60-foot wide swaths of lands that are now gonna contain the roads and all the other public infrastructure are dedicated to the city as public right-of-way. This is that same thing on a much smaller scale, but it's that same principle.
Mike, just to clarify, that's done at no cost in the city when those dedications take place, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, that is the crux of it, that's what's different here. If this right-of-way does not get dedicated to the city at this time, sometime, if and when that road needs an additional lane, needs to expand out, then it would be purchasing it from that property owner.
So, Mike, let me ask you, the development or the subdivision to the east, did that developer or those individual homeowners along Drexel Avenue, did they go along with the right-of-way?
Right, so, yeah, that's the Highland Meadows subdivision, and at that time, that right-of-way was dedicated to the city.
Okay.
When that developed, at one time, with that plat.
With the complications that we're kind of dealing with right now.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I get your opinion on this, Ms. Carls? Well, I'm stating that, I'm still stating, no matter how you say it, you're still basically, you're taking land from whoever it is, and putting, and demanding, pretty much demanding that it has to be given, stated as a right-of-way without being compensated somewhere down the line. I just can't believe that doesn't fall underneath the eminent domain rule.
I may not be answering what you're looking for, but I can offer a couple of examples. Background is, this is part of our official... part of our official map which you've heard back January 16th we've had that discussion in terms of our code we've got the section in 14.40 sub A sub seven whenever a parcel to be subdivided embraces any part of a street highway or greenway designated in the comprehensive plan or official map that part of the proposed public way shall be platted and dedicated by the subdivider in the location and at a width indicated along with all other streets in the subdivision your subdivision being parcels.
I understand that part but.
But having said that in terms of this dedication you're buying the property I think reiterating some things that were said to subdivide it build a house on one rent out the other whatever your plans are to that extent it's under the idea that there's no denial of your economically viable use of the property this is a condition that we impose I think the question was just asked about the development of that plat to the east you're allowed to move forward with that but this is one of the pieces that's consistent with our city planning and under statute I believe it's 6223 sub seven so consistent with that planning we're not singling you out as a subdivider for two parcels and in terms of that we've made as a council that legislative determination classifying that applicability of this dedication requirement to anyone similarly so to that extent you've heard that we're recommending it for consistency this section I hear what you're saying in terms of when is this ever going to happen how is this going to affect me if we had a crystal ball that'd be great to be able to say hey actually right here that's not going to be for 15 years we can't say that and as far as carving out an exception this is just me as a non-engineer but if we carved out an exception for your CSM for those two parcels then arguably if we're going to follow our official map roadway we're going to have that jutting in and out wouldn't be able to add the additional lane I understand what you're saying in terms of timing but in terms of it I mean your question putting words in your mouth I think is is this a taking isn't this no just compensation for my property we don't believe that it is part of it is there's a sanitary sewer there already existing there's that easement that is reflected on your CSM I believe.
Yes.
So having said that and I would defer to planning on this you know in terms of setback requirements the right-of-way as it were you're not going to be landscaping in that a jutting up to Drexel Avenue you're not going to be able to put anything in that 20-foot section so it's consistent with our overall plan I don't think that I have a satisfactory answer for you I think that in terms of and I mean that as a developer but in terms of city planning overall it's trying to figure out then if you look at the roadway safety welfare of the citizenry it's good for the public whether or not it's going to come during your lifetime I don't know but that rings sort of hollow because your argument is then why do I have to do it and I think that it is just as Mike was speaking part of what we're looking at in terms of treating everyone the same consistent with our official map.
I have no problem doing it I just believe that it should be compensated that's put it on there all day long if somebody was down the line when this does happen that we would somebody would be compensated for it. My whole thing I don't have a problem putting it on there I guess I'll address that when that time comes but I will agree with the ROW on the.
So let me just inquire if we're entertaining some sort of an action on this item so you're agreeing to that as a condition at this point in time as stated in the ordinance but I don't want to put words in the council's mouth either for a motion but it's being contemplated up here and my understanding is in terms of keeping the shed that MMSD had those conditions that were stated you tear it down or if it collapses you can't rebuild you can't enlarge or alter it you have to contact field staff at MMSD before making any significant repairs and you won't let the shed fall into disrepair so that's your agreement with them.
And the other thing is is now this house is going to most likely be sold here in the next couple of months that will apply to the new owner without a problem?
The condition regarding the shed?
Yeah.
I would say that's a policy determination up to the council but I don't believe that we're going to be revisiting it if it is going to be no more non-conforming than it already is if that makes sense.
Yep alright.
But I'd leave that to the council.
Okay. Fair enough.
Now just a question if MMSD ever sells that land to a developer what happens with the agreement going forward does MMSD have to go to the property owner whether it's Mr. Stromowski or another party? Or give up that dedication land? Straddle the line.
Yeah clearly not.
Right but I mean.
Strictly to I think it'd be what they're calling.
It has Kerry?
The question may be moot because I believe that's in conservancy I may be wrong but I believe the land is in conservancy and that's in perpetuity.
Okay but in the past MMSD has owned land here which is sold off.
Right but conservancy land cannot be developed.
Okay well if that's it then.
If that's the case then it's kind of a moot point if it's not the case then that would be almost a private matter between two property owners.
Okay I guess that's my question thank you. Okay. Lawyer agrees with you you're good Kerry. Any other questions comments from council?
Just one more to Kerry and to Mike just to better understand this a little bit the the properties on the north end of Drexel Avenue specifically ones that have been recently developed Life Creek Church and then the apartment development there as well the right-of-way I'm guessing was requested of them as well right was it asked for for landowners on the north side?
Yes in fact for the Drexel Ridge development they did dedicate along Drexel Avenue and then the roadway that was going through the property they took over as private.
So all those other property owners went along with providing the right-of-way?
At the time of development they were asked to dedicate and they did.
Thank you.
Kerry you are correct it is in a conservancy go into the reading thank you seeing no other questions comments motion?
I'd like to make a motion but Melissa you may have to to give me with this one I would say that we approve resolution number 11904 dash 011618 with two of three of the conditions being met those being the right-of-way and then all the technical directions and then condition number two that the storage shed and concrete pad having to be removed by July 1st 2018 be removed that condition be removed that would approve the certified survey map for Brian and Jenny Stromowski for the property at 1825 East Drexel Avenue.
Okay. Loricle second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Great thank you thank you. Item number nine consideration of a resolution number 11912 dash 021918 authorizing and directing execution of the lease by and between the city of Oak Creek and DTS Mixed Use LLC for public restroom facilities at Drexel Town Square. Andrew?
Sure thanks Mayor I can handle this one at your last meeting you did you did review some terms so I can get into the to the terms just a little bit but I won't pin down as much as we did last last meeting but I think it's important to note that the the lease the restroom facilities have always been a need in Drexel Town Square I think that was that was always a given the public has clamored for these restroom facilities however when both Chief Anderson and I came on with the city we didn't necessarily agree with the scope of of the of the terms that were you know at least at least discussed with a developer in the city prior to our arrival so we took a second look at this and working with the developer over the last year we had we have arrived at some at some new deal terms that in a nutshell foregoes the PD substation that was was a package deal with this leased space which is right next to Pizza Man in DTS we still maintain Chief Anderson still maintains that we we just don't have the resources available right now to to actually staff the PD substation but that allows us to more comfortably move forward with the bathroom space from a financial perspective also as a part of the original deal terms that were 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 put forward the the city was was looking at a triple net lease so we had the obligations of our pro-rata share of property taxes all utilities associated therewith common area maintenance fees and you know we really felt that the bathroom space you know more or less functions as the common area for the benefit of everybody obviously in the development as well as everybody visiting the development so through some negotiation I think we we arrived at a better spot the city will pay annual rents of $22,000 for the bathroom space our only obligation above and beyond that is twofold which is the cost for water and sewer utilities gas and electric and all other associated utilities will be included in the annual rent and on the flips or excuse me and we'll also be looking at a cleaning fee for events at Drexel Town Square the the developer the landlord in this case now is taking over all of the routine maintenance of janitorial services paper supplies soap supplies and all of those kinds of things which were also originally the responsibility of the city but in the cleaning fee we had some discussion on the cleaning fee the way it's structured is the cleaning fee for special events would be $200 for any event lasting four hours or less and 400 for events lasting longer than four hours I had mentioned to the council that I wanted to take another swing at that and really got a clarification on we were speaking past each other a little bit what the developer was putting forward was actually during the event an interim cleaning fee not more to clean the event or clean up after the event at the end of the event so I thought that made some sense to have a have an interim an interim cleaning where we had a you know a day-long event so that that hopefully clears up that issue this will be a well lastly I should also note that the city spent approximately $7,500 on portable portable toilets for lack of a better word for our events in 2017 as we continue to grow events by and large these bathroom facilities maybe coupling with available facilities at the city hall library complex during these events should satisfy all of the restroom facility needs that that we would need unless we have an extremely large events event here which we don't foresee so that's a kind of a direct offset to the the costs for the bathroom facilities we're looking at also note that included in the budgets for both the city as well as the tourism commission fund of the city the cost for the annual rent and the cleaning fees will be split evenly with that this approval will be a two-step approval we're looking at approving the lease terms in the actual lease itself tonight and at your meeting of March 6th we will be looking at awarding the bid for the build out of the bathroom space.
Great questions comments for Andrew Steve?
For what it's worth I noticed that we're we're going to be paying the $22,000 a year for rent and notwithstanding the fact that it'll be open for all other special events at Drexel Town Square it's basically only going to be open for four months out of the year on a regular basis Memorial Day to Labor Day just for what that's worth four months.
I think it should be open longer well.
Well I I think that's what I'm getting at I mean four months it's going to be closed more often than it's going to be open so I don't know.
Well again they'll use it seasonally so Fall Fest Winter Fest this weekend would encompass it.
That's one day.
Probably one day any other events and again as time goes we can adjust as seen needed but there's no denying that the spaces are needed.
Oh I'm not saying it's not needed I'm just pointing out that's really only four months out of the year.
I was I meant to ask if we had a chance to look at this as a whole as an association we could somehow partner these costs with some of the other businesses in Drexel Town Square more foot in the bill to develop us out we could maybe a partnership with the other businesses there to help us pay the way as we go to run it and take care of it during the year.
I think it's a viable idea but we'd have to negotiate that. At this point in time I can't comment on how often people are going into businesses at Drexel Town Square to use their facilities.
Just a little bit behind the logic on the on the window of time really we we coupled this with the seasonality of the splash pad we obviously have this available to the city and its visitors and residents during special events but there's just simply not people loitering around Drexel Town Square on Wednesday October 14th at 10:30 a.m. where the bathroom facilities would be required you know as as things you know obviously grow and evolve continue to grow and evolve here developers are going to be more than happy to landlord in this case be more than happy to take a look at at meeting the needs of the city but obviously at you know perhaps you know additional different terms and I'd also add that you know please remember where we the point we started from and where we're at today in terms of the the financial arrangement I think we've we've done a done a pretty good job on behalf of the residents to make sure that we're right sizing the costs associated with the the benefit of the restroom facilities.
And keep in mind it is 22,000 a year but we're currently spending $7,500 a year on porta-potties for events so I mean if you take that seven grand out of there it does lessen the blow somewhat I guess my only question it'll be open 9 to 9 is that going to be on a time lock or is somebody going to have to go in there and secure the facility and make sure it's empty?
The it will be on a time lock and it will be remotely accessible so building maintenance can lock and unlock those doors from the comfort of his own living room on his on his laptop so yeah very 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 flexible.
And do we have a monitoring system in there?
Uh yes there will be a security camera in the entrance area only obviously you can't have them in the restrooms but but for the main entrance from the outside.
Yeah I'm just getting at that nobody stays in there overnight. Loiterers out. Okay seeing no other discussion motion?
Uh Loricle moved that the common council approve resolution number 11912 dash 021918 approving a lease by and between the city of Oak Creek and DTS Mixed Use LLC for public restroom facilities at Drexel Town Square.
Dukenyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Item number 10 is the vendor summary report for February 13th 2018 please any questions comments Bridget's here to answer or Mike ASR engineering stuff on there. Mayor?
Yes.
Bridget question please help refresh my memory on number 12 what is the Drexel Avenue landfill monitoring term?
That that is a vacant parcel owned by the city on East Drexel and there is a requirement it is a former landfill it is there's a requirement for ongoing monitoring of the groundwater on the site and so this has been going on for decades and will continue on into the future.
Chris it used to.
Funded by the stormwater fee.
Chris it used to be the city dump.
West of the.
That's correct.
Thank you Mike. Other question? Or Bridget maybe? 14 and 15 on the like you see you got some stuff here so the Oversight Professional Services what was that for do you know?
Yes Ramble Environment is our environment is our environmental consultant. Yes, Rambo Environment is our, Environ is our environmental consultant, and they've been providing onsite inspection of some of the work that is required by the Department of Natural Resources.
Is that the newer stuff or is this on?
This is the new stuff. This is the park. So really need to keep close tabs on excavated soil, how it's handled, where is it being placed, is it being placed correctly? And so we need to document all of that. That's the bulk of, that's the bulk of it. I would say a portion of this and the bulk of it was at Drexel Town Square, but they, or, excuse me, at Lake Vista, there's some of this was not exactly split out. It's split out according to the account numbers. But they did, they have been, you know, helping us out on some outstanding items on Drexel Town Square and a few other sites.
So then on 15 is the 208 for Roche, is that engineering services for pavilions? Because I thought a lot of this stuff was already paid for.
That's correct. This is completely the construction of the pavilion. The contractor is Roche Construction and Engineering, but they are, they're doing the, they're just constructing the pavilion.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, motion.
He'll move to approve the February 13, 2018 vendor summary report in the month, combined amount of $1,450,003.4.
Kuzikowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lurk.
Aye.
Duke Neack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye. Item 11 is consideration of a motion to purchase a new ground master mower up over $60,000. So here to tell us is Ted.
Okay, this is a pretty straightforward item. It is expensive mower. This is one of the mowers that we talked about during the, during the CEP meetings. We had actually budgeted $65,000 for it. It's a very large mower. It's 10 and 1/2 foot wide, the blades on it. And we use this to, currently, we have one, and we use it to cut Aben Shyne Park and some of the bigger areas with the new Lake Vista Park with a considerable amount more to mow. That's why we requested this mower. We looked through and we did see that the State of Wisconsin had a contract that they had bid out, and so we scouted around a little more and found that the National IPA actually also had a contract that we can piggyback off of that beat the Wisconsin State Contract by $1,422. So we're requesting that we be allowed to purchase through that contract through a vendor Rinders, although it really doesn't matter because anyone that participates in this would have to give us the same price. But they are just a local vendor that we use to purchase equipment from.
Questions for Ted?
So Ted, the 61785 includes that $1,400 discount or?
No, actually, what that means, I just put that on there to show the State of Wisconsin's, if we had went with that one, it would have been like 63 and change.
Okay, cool.
Other questions? Motion.
He'll move to approve the purchase for 2018 Toro 4100D Grounds Master Mower from Rinders Inc. in the amount of $61,705.4.
Kuzikowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Duke Neack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye. Item 13 is consideration of a motion to enter into an agreement with Household and Levine Associates for the amount of $159,000.
You missed one.
Oh, 12.
I'll start.
Oh, yeah, that would have been problematic. Okay, item 12 crossed you right off there, Tom. Consideration Resolution Number 11911-021918, approving the Milwaukee County Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan, and Chief Rosen.
I appreciate the rubber stamp there. Kind of let me explain just because I shot you the email on the plan itself because it's over 230 pages. So kind of let me go through the past, present, and future of the document, and I'll try to be brief, but the past and I kind of want to say this is just after Y2K, this disaster mitigation plan was was put in effect by the federal government. And in regards to this, is it started to, the process of the nation being better prepared for disasters, unknowing that 9/11 was just around the corner. And but as we approved these plans, this is the, would be the third process in this regards, is that the plan has evolved, and currently, what this plan does, it only includes the suburbs, it does not include the city of Milwaukee, they have their own plan. In regards to this, it basically, for the most part, covers the weather events. So if you have a child in school that's doing some sort of weather project, this plan is really interesting because it goes through the past 65 years of histories in the Milwaukee area, from heat-related to tornadoes and everything else in between. And in regards to this, is how do we better prepare for this? And as the last plan was adopted, we were just fresh off the last couple floods we had. So that was a big topic of mitigation. Ie example is Tulsa bought out all those houses along the river so that, because they kept flooding, and fire guys got to train in them for many months. So it was a win-win for a few people. But moving forward into this, the last plan after being adopted, one of the things that's now included in this is also our rail response because of the change in accrued oil and some utility failures because of the grid system. They're trying to work on this. But by approving this plan, though, what is the best avenue for this is allows our area to be eligible for disaster mitigation grants. And why is that important now? Well, moving forward, after the, especially after Hurricane Harvey this past time, there's going to be a shift, which the political strife of the federal government are looking to move forward on this, because for every $1 they're spending on mitigation, currently, you're spending $6 on post-disaster cleanup. So and these hurricanes take years to rectify, and then you take the Thomas Fire in California, these federal disasters are years and years of restitution. So they're trying to go in the next four or five years of more mitigation dollars going towards the front end versus the back end. So we've done a lot as a community already with our stormwater management plan. As an example, speaking with Mike, the number of flood projects we've done and the money we've invested has curtailed our exposure to flooding from what we used to have 10, 15, 20 years ago. So we've made progress, but not to say there aren't new projects coming in, coming up, and also with currently under our zoning code of the normal development of detention ponds and retention ponds in that regards. So with this approval tonight, we get on, we will be part of this, but also the change that's biggest with this document is you can change this document just about at any time. It allows us to go in as a stakeholder and update it. We don't have to wait the five years. So if there's a change for us or we're looking at a potential project, we can go in there and add it. So that's called the beauty of this. The downside to this is we are going to be competing with the Floridas, Texas, Louisianas, Californias that have the front-page news disasters more often. How those dollars are going to be distributed, that's still kind of up in the air, and that's through the next four to five years. So that's pretty much what this plan represents.
Questions for Chief?
Anything specific on the docket, Tom, for the pre-part of this? That you're looking at?
Yeah, well, looking at our list, if we go back even, I kind of turn the page here, is what we've done in the past is the mobile homes up by Parkway Estates, not Parkway Estates, Oak Creek Estates, 2137 West College. There, after that last flooding between that and the College Courts Apartments, we did some mitigation efforts there. Ours is more of the line, because we're the growing community, we can do it up front. Like the other communities that are well-established, it's either acquiring buildings. I think Milwaukee did something with the KK River just a few years ago. So there's all these things that are ongoing. But not to say that there's not, you know, not specifically speaking to flooding, that there could be some other things available to us. And again, that's, we'd have to ask questions on that, that would it be eligible or not? I know that, you know, the state and the federal and the brownfields in that regards, is that part of disaster planning? It hasn't been in the past. Would it be in the future? Don't know.
Chief, are there any financial impacts on doing the updates to be approved for the 18 plan? Fees, training?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay.
There's always training that goes on because of the turnover that happens throughout the course of years and decades. Just in the past year, we lost Carl Stembel and Janine Hibbler on emergency management side at the county level, that those were decades of experience, that we have newer people in again and kind of the retraining at that county and state level. So, and again, you know, this is, for us moving forward, I think, you know, we're in pretty good shape. So how much are we going to use of this doc, document, you know, remains to be seen. But we have taken advantage. One thing's I know you guys have been wrestling with, and again, it'd have to be something through the county to start with, is the Forest Hill, Aben Shyne Park issue that came up last year. You know, would this be part one? You know, Mike, maybe that's something that we, you know, might be an option. But again, these dollars aren't having allocated yet, and like I said, you may be fighting for other, out of the big states. But got to give it the old college try.
Okay, motion.
Go ahead, Ken. Sorry. I did enough already.
What was that?
Go for it.
Okay.
Kuzikowski make a motion when Council adopt Resolution Number 11911-021918, approving the Milwaukee County Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
Duke Neack.
Aye. Now we'll do number 13, and that's consideration of the motion to enter into an agreement with Household and Levine Associates in the amount of $159,900 to complete an update to the City of Oak Creek's Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Code. Carrie?
So as Council is aware, in September of last year, you authorized staff to release an RFP for this update project. The RFP was released in October and had a submission deadline of December 1st. We received five applications by the deadline, and we selected as staff three of those to be presented to the selection committee, which was made up of Plan Commissioners, or one Plan Commissioner, Planning Staff, Mayor Bukovich, Assistant City Engineer, Brian Johnston, and Communications Coordinator, Leslie Flynn. And based on those three interviews, the committee selected Household Levine. We had several reasons for this, some of them being the fact that this is one firm that would be providing all services, whereas others were partnering with several firms, and the committee felt that this added a level of accountability and potentially reduced the potential for conflict or other firm issues. They're a national firm, they do have familiarity with the region and with Wisconsin in particular. They have recognitions and awards and have presented at the American Planning Association Conference. They've also authored several items for the American Planning Association on emerging planning and zoning challenges, some of which we are facing now. They have national and regional knowledge, which allows them to provide us with some new insights into how to address some of these emerging issues. They also provided a graphic brochure as part of their presentation, which allowed us to see how they would address some of these issues, and they seemed to have a very good grasp of the city and had a comprehensive and direct approach for the project. They also included in the proposal one year of support following the adoption of the Comprehensive Planning Zoning Code, so that allows us to do some additional training or have some questions answered by staff should that arise. The graphics that were shown in the presentation were second to none. The brochure was advanced clear and provided a level of professionalism that we were very impressed with, some of them going a little bit beyond what the others had presented, although those were excellent as well. And planning and zoning is at the core of their mission. That's what they do. They are not an engineering firm, they are not an architectural firm, they are not a one-size-fits-all firm, they are a planning firm, and that was something that provided also a level of confidence in the selection committee. The Plan Commission recommended that the Common Council award the contract to Household Levine at their meeting on February 13th. The project is anticipated to last approximately 18 months from the date of the finalization of the contract, which we anticipate in early March.
Very well said, Carrie. Any questions? Steve?
Carrie may have brought this up back in September, but when was the last time this was done? It was, it had been quite some while, wasn't it?
Yes, the 2002 Comprehensive Plan is the latest update for that, although we've had minor updates here and there. And as far as a comprehensive zoning code overhaul, it's been decades, probably going back to the 90s.
I think that's why we decided to do this, because so many things have changed.
Correct. We've had several updates that are addressing certain things, rezonings, just changing language, allowing things, and rather than doing a piecemeal, we felt, we felt that we're looking at the zoning ordinance as a whole, incorporating some of the federal and state legislation that have passed in the few years, making sure everything is up to date, same with the Comprehensive Plan.
Big bear to tackle, but sounds like this company's can do it.
Yes, we have confidence that they can.
Anyone else?
And Mayor, you were in the committee, would you have the?
Yeah, let me bring you up. Also along with me was Wally Dickman from Planning.
Fred.
Pete Wagner from Zoning.
Fred Seibert, not Wally.
I'm sorry, Fred Seibert. Did I say Wally Dickman? Sorry. Wally Dickman. I guess I'm missing the guy there. Anyways, Fred Seibert from Planning, Pete Wagner from Zoning, Doug Seymour was also there, and Bo sat in. We did have three great candidates. Carrie summed it up best. Everybody kind of had the proposals in front of them before we met, had a chance to read them over, and everybody had their one, two, and three picked. And this wasn't everybody's one, but when they walked out, they clearly were the one. And it was really amazing, and one more note on this company, they're actually an Illinois-based company. So what really sold it was the fresh set of eyes they're coming into with markets they've worked in that weren't just what our neighbors are doing. They looked at Oak Creek from a new set of eyes, thought that was going to be very beneficial going forward in the next couple of decades. So they presented well, they were professional, and I think Carrie summed it up best. They do it all at once, stop shop. They seem to work very well together, and their enthusiasm level was really there. By the time they walked out, like I said, everybody had them on top of this. The choice was rather easy at that point. If nothing else, motion, please.
He'll move to enter an agreement with the Household Levine Associates for the amount of $159,900 to complete an update to the City of Oak Creek Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Code.
Kuzikowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
Duke Neack.
Aye.
Toman.
Brings us to the Licensing Committee in item 14, and I'll turn it over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I go ahead with the motion, does anybody have any questions with regards to what's on the Common Council report? Okay. Kirkowski make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the February 19, 2018 License Committee Report.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye. Item fifteen, uh, is consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, section nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-E, to discuss the terms of proposed finance agri- development agreement for the properties located at six-ten West Rossin Avenue and seventy-oh-one South Sixth Street and seventy-four-five South Sixth Street. B, section nineteen eighty-five, sub-one, sub-E, to discuss the terms of a proposed finance development agreement for the properties located at three-thirty, four-hundred, four-ten, and five-hundred West Drexel Avenue.
Common Council, President Gale?
Thank you, Mayor. Gale will move to convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, section nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-B, to discuss the terms of a proposed finance development agreement for the property located at six-ten West Rossin Avenue, seven-thousand-one South Sixth Street and seventy-four-five South Sixth Street. B, section nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-B, to discuss the terms of a proposed finance development agreement for the property located at three-three-zero-four-hundred and four-ten and five-hundred West Drexel Avenue.
Guskowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guskowski.
Aye.
We'll now convene into closed session, and we will reconvene at its conclusion and, uh, take up any resolution considerations.
Guskowski, a second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guskowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guskowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guskowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guskowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guskowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Next is item eighteen, that's consideration of a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a finance development agreement between the city of Oak Creek and Oak Creek Rossin Industrial LLC.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guskowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Uh, good evening, my name is Jerry Frankie, sixty-three forty-two Berkshire Lane, Mount Pleasant, Wisconsin. I'm handing out a copy of these. During my career at Wisps Park, I spent fifteen years working with city of Oak Creek officials on Oakview Business Park, Drexel Town Square, and the lakefront. Lots of blood, sweat, and tears went into these transformational projects. They truly were public-private partnerships, not just because the city was agreeable to creating TIF districts to make the projects financially feasible, but because a share of the gain on sales of the properties at Oakview Business Park at five thousand dollars per acre, in Drexel Town Square, thirty percent of the net gain of the sale was paid to the city. This sharing agreement has net the city more than one-point-five million dollars to date. The rationale behind the profit-sharing agreement was to assure that if the projects were financially successful, the city would be rewarded for its financial support through the creation of the TIF districts. As a developer, I'm hesitant to appear and comment upon other developers' projects. Please do not take my comments this evening as being against a project, rather just some concerns that I believe the council should consider before it approves the development finance agreements. Probably a little bit too late, but I do want to remind the council of some things because these will continue to come in front of you. I'm primarily concerned about the agreement for the retail project at Sixth Street and Drexel Avenue, but some of my concerns apply to both projects for which developer finance agreements were considered tonight. The concerns are, are the TIF funds needed because the value of the property being purchased is too high to make the retail project feasible? Self-storage is one of the most valuable real estate sectors right now, so I'm assuming it is being purchased for the value justified by the rental stream. If that is the case, the property's value should be reduced to the value of the land without the improvements, or at least the price being paid minus the cost to demolish the building on site. The current lo- owner should not be able to benefit from the TIF resulting in overpaying for the property. This is particularly true because in my opinion, there exists an oversupply of retail zone land in the city and the vicinity, including Drexel Town Square, and I do understand that the Aldi store, which has been reported in the media to be located at this project at Sixth and Drexel, it can't go in Drexel Town Square because of the Meyer store restrictions. However, two Aldi stores already exist within two-point-five to three miles of this site in Oak Creek. The proposed retail outlets in the IKEA area, the proposed retail developments at Thirteenth and Ninety-Ninety-four, and vacant land which remains along Howell Avenue. I would encourage the city to share in any financial upside when the projects are sold, similar to the profit-sharing arrangements for Drexel Town Square and Oakview Business Park. The retail sector is under severe pressure to change and or downsize, so existing retail space is becoming more difficult to lease. The city loaned a substantial amount of money to create the districts for the projects I've mentioned. Both districts are seeing their tax values grow, but creating ex- excess retail zone land will delay its continued growth and negatively impact the TIF repayments. This is of concern because Wisps Park has made loans to the city to cover incremental shortfalls nearing one million dollars that get repaid as the increment becomes available. As additional similar projects are created, the time to repay Wisps Park's loans gets longer, and the city must pay more interest. Drexel Town Square has helped to increase investment in the areas around it. At some point, retail projects which are truly transformational need to stand on their own financial merits, not rely on TIF assistance. Thank you.
Thank you for that information, Jerry. Comments? Questions? Are there any other points made?
Greg, anything?
Yes, I just want to kind of point out one thing that was, it sounds like it was talked about in here, um, at the planning committee. Um, I asked the question, based on these two agreements, that I wanted to ensure that the city was not supplementing the increased cost of the property, rather putting all the investment, um, from the increment into only environmental remediation clo- remediation costs, um, for the blight remediation, and I was assured that that in fact was the case, and based on the, uh, the agreements here, that that is the case, that the money is actually going to environmental remediation and not, uh, supplementing the cost of increased land, basically.
Yes, you did bring that up, and, and you're right, you were assured of that, and the documents do back that up. Uh, anyone else? Nothing? Okay, seeing none, uh, motion?
Kuskowski make a motion to approve resolution number one-one-nine-one-four-dash-zero-two-one-nine-one-eight, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a finance development agreement by and between the city of Oak Creek and I Drexel LLC.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guskowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guskowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guskowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.